Welcome to the Quincy City Council Chamber for notice of our public hearing, two thousand sixteen, two eighty-seven. Madam Clerk? Can you read your opening remarks?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, in a deep withdrawal, if permissible.
Madam Clerk, would you call the wall?
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Crowe.
Present.
Counselor DeWanna.
Present.
Counselor Finch.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Forrest.
Present.
Counselor Leeang.
Present.
Counselor Pelletji. Counselor Hughes.
Madam Clerk, if you could read the two thousand sixteen, two eighty-seven matter of force in this public hearing.
Yes, this is an ordinance adopted in section one ninety-three of chapter two eighteen in the Act of two thousand sixteen, proposing acceptance of the provisions of the Municipal Modernization Act that allows for a community to establish a fundamental speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour on public ways.
All those, anyone present wishing to speak in favor of two thousand sixteen, two eighty-seven, would you come forward and state your name and address for the record?
My name is Irene Lutz. My address is twenty-five Booth Street.
Yeah.
And I would like to clearly say that reducing the speed limit on our highways to twenty-five miles per hour would be a dramatic step toward increasing the safety of the local road users in our city, whether it's to walk or to bicycle. I'm sure you're aware a twenty mile per hour moving vehicle, a pedestrian, has only a one in ten chance of killing a pedestrian, whereas a car moving forty miles per hour has a nine out of ten chance of killing a pedestrian. So please vote yes on this and put this, put safety above speed in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else we should speak in favor? I recognize former Ward Three City Councilor Kevin Cobb.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, councilors. Glad to be back here. I know I'm not really getting any ideas. But I've come full circle because I was an advocate long before I was a city councillor and so feeling pretty comfortable back in this role, getting used to it. But those of you who circled with me for any appreciable length of time may have recalled that I had more than a passing interest in mobility and safety. The three consecutive legislative sessions, two thousand nine, two thousand eleven, two thousand thirteen, I introduced, and this council passed, and this mayor signed, a home rule petition that was an act authorizing the city of Quincy to establish neighborhood speed induction zones, doing exactly what this legislation that was passed in two thousand sixteen would afford the city of Quincy the ability to do, which is to lower speed limits in densely populated residential areas, business areas, below a hundred percent speed limit of thirty. Now, I wasn't successful in getting that legislation through the legislature, although I did well testify. I appreciated our legislative delegation's efforts, madam clerk, but my good friend Marty Walsh, who has a lot more cachet than I do, did it in one fell swoop in two thousand sixteen. He initiated the same home rule petition, which would allow home rule authority for municipality to do exactly this thing. So I'm encouraging you, obviously, to do that, not simply because of the fact that I filed the same home rule petition. Some of you remember that I also introduced the senior citizen safety zone, which afforded some of that same type of home rule authority, but only to constituents in areas where senior housing exists. I would commend to your review, section one ninety-four of the same law. You're looking to adopt, actually, one ninety-three. One ninety-four allows you to reduce it to twenty miles per hour in designated safety zones and allows you to ask the department, the Mass Department of Transportation, to do that on state roadways as well. That was a limitation that we had with senior safety zones. And it was a source, and continues to be a source of frustration for places like the Fennel House, because it is on a state roadway. So I would suggest to you to look at one ninety-four and to consider adopting that as well, because that will allow you to petition the Mass DOT to include a place such as the Fennel House in the senior safety zone designation. I'm also here tonight on a very personal note. February nineteenth, two thousand four, my wife's father, who was a World War II veteran, DOW, much like Bob North, who survived horrendous treatment by the hands of the Nazis, was struck as a pedestrian in a crosswalk within five feet of a sidewalk. The car was traveling at thirty miles per hour. He didn't die that night, and it might have been more merciful had he died that night. He spent seven years after that in Mass General Hospital, in smoking rehab, in nursing facilities, and then back to that side. Seven years because of a careless ride. So this is personal for me. So I strongly encourage you to do what you can. I know this is no silver lining. As we know, although I learned tonight, I guess it's five E's, Jack Gilman always told me it's three, education, engineering, and enforcement. Whether it's three or five, you have to have the other elements in place. You can adopt this, but unless, you know, this is enforced, it's not going to amount to a hell of a thing. Quincy Police Department was a damn good police department, and I know during my tenure that any time I asked for enforcement, they were there and it was done, and I know that they're doing that. So I encourage you to pass this and to give the Quincy Police Department another tool in their toolbox, and I thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to sign in favor, sign in the back. There's a paper in the back that one can sign. Seeing no others speaking in favor, I'll close that section of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Last call. Anyone wishing to speak in opposing?
I'm not so much here to talk against the proposal, so as to suggest that there are other better solutions. Next, I'd like to state for the record, I am an accident victim. I was struck by a car twenty years ago. I have an eighteen inch scar off my knee, my hip. I haven't run in twenty years. I walked funny first, got bad ankle on the other foot, straight up those, and then both legs went up. Now, that said, I can rightly appreciate that I'm not getting attention to cave rights and proposed ordinance, as I see dangerous driving in Quincy every single day. At the same time, how people lower the speed limit citywide, or at least pervasively, it's unlikely to accomplish much, all that much, anything. For starters, traffic speeds are primarily set by the de facto, set de facto by the average of drivers' senses of speed capacity of a particular run of road. Slower for native, air residential faster for others, with official speeds essentially then set to reflect the same. Granted, in some settings, speed limits are reduced for good and special reasons, for example, in your school zones, and these can be readily enforced, but opting to reduce the basic local speed line, speed limit, by ordinance is likely a result of general disregard by drivers in a law enforcement mindset. Perhaps more importantly, are there any data behind this proposed ordinance that locally, in the case of the proposed route, in the basic limit, is going to have a future effect? Or is it just a proposal that makes you really feel good and declare that, or you move on to something else? More importantly, I would suggest actual limitations would suggest much better ways to effectively improve traffic safety. One, which the council is addressing later, is doing something about the appalling state of local streets, the maintenance, lack of capacity, or in some cases, both. Distraught driving is also another serious problem. I see it all the time. For one example, I was doing a little landscaping when Churchill fires to an entirely, and I saw a little sideswipe, a string of cars parked along, legally, along Quincy Avenue. And for another sort of problematic driver, just yesterday, I saw someone, for an SUV doing the indigenous as well as infamous Massachusetts E on Hancock Street near Memorial Stadium, where Hancock Street is but a two lane roadway. And the driver almost reran to park car. The only thing is, it happened so quickly, I wasn't able to see if the driver was also distracted. And for a quick and easy observation of problems, I suggest that the council just step outside and spend a little time in front of, along Hancock Street, anywhere from Sullivan Tire to Hancock's intersection with Grand Street. For starters, you're just going to see a lot of red drivers readily hanging E with the building block, so much for W O Y. That, and how the new road design is fraught with way too many lanes, traffic changes, traffic lanes changes, often confusing signage, traffic signals in particular, not just the new hawk light systems, but also the lights and signalization of intersections, Washington Temple and New York Streets, as well as a multiple set of closely coupled hawk lights and two additional traffic signals in front of the Grand Trust Building in that Grand Street. There are the speed humps for the hawk lights, and no amount of the area by local drivers is going to offset the only expected confusion of occasional passersby in Quincy Center. That you ought to consider, and really I could spend an hour watching this run a Hancock Street during the evening commute, is if you do, you will observe drivers hurrying at bottoms, index figures, barely striking other vehicles, pedestrians leaning on their orange shirts, one with a picture of where the Third World Country. And speaking of pedestrians, drivers frequently insist that they have to run away in hawk signals of flash and red. I'm personally amazed that pedestrians have already heard. Diversity pedestrians are thoroughly annoying along the lanes across, not only in hawk signals, but that confuse with complex light system cycle for the crosswalks behind the University Church, the intersection, and Washington Temple, Grand Street. Folks, they're bigger and more effective, more important things than a seventy-five mile per hour speed limit drive, which may need to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else, again, can't sign in opposition, there are papers in the back, if anyone wishing to sign. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, I close this section and I close the public hearing. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have, I'd like to open this public hearing related to order two thousand seventeen oh five five. Madam Clerk, would you call the wall?
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Crowe.
Present.
Counselor DeWanna.
Present.
Counselor Finch.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Forrest.
Counselor Leeang. Present.
Counselor Pelletji.
Present.
Present.
If you could read the open meeting, open meeting log regarding the...
Pursuant to the open meeting law, anyone may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, in that deep withdrawal, if permissible.
Madam Clerk, would you please read two thousand seventeen oh five five?
Order for a home rule petition, amending chapter sixty-four, section three A of the Act of two thousand and one, an act authorizing the city of Quincy to impose a local local occupancy tax, also known as the hotel tax, and an open space recreation and tourism plan.
All those, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of order two thousand seventeen oh five five? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of two thousand seventeen oh five five?
Be back.
Name and address for the record.
As you've proposed, we should use the hotel tax for roads to keep some of the road there. Consider the following: this legislation is approved, two thousand, there was no call on the Marymount Hotel. The order, as well as considerable increases in hotel revenue coming into the city's call for care for the major expansions and upgrades above the Adams End, the President's, similarly under eighty room hotels, so we'll be opening up Quincy Center. Further, local tax payers approve the one percent community permanent vacation tax override, which the state matches, further matches on the order fifty cents for the local dollar on approved projects. In short, there's ample funding earmarked for spending on local open space, except that is, the mayor's desire to spend even more on things locals do not view as any of the mayor's important, as he does. For example, spending almost sixty million dollars on merely the second phase of a likely run, close to thirty million dollar Adams Hancock Street, third large on a two-eighth apartment. This is, this is just one example. I know that the administration loves to talk of all the features and stuff, but the fact that the design plan is well past overpack, with all manner of design cliches and features. For example, the water features of both the, the Christian Science Reflection Pool in Austin Southland, as well as has vertical enhancing water sprays, reflect play areas in Water Country, and all of which will depend on an already built, close to one million dollars underground water supply system next to this building. Throw in the broad surfaces that require underground utilities, redo, half million dollars are wasted on statues. It's just, it's too far. The mayor's made much about how this thirty million will not be funded by local property tax, but at the end of the day, tax money is still tax money, no matter how it's raised, as well as it, this claim, at the end of the day, is but a variation of street rifter's shell game. Similar, let's not forget, the mayor long sent his dream green would be paid for with the IQ funding, etc. So much for that funding gap, we need to kind of... Perhaps more importantly, most importantly of all, however, is, is the time the mayor's asked for the twenty-seven million dollar debt issue refunded by the hotel motel tax, there is at least thirty-six million dollars in further, most apartments, recreation, and open space, but spending, and probably a lot more than fifty-two million in total, after everything is looked at and known, as well as as gold. Granted, the administration says and expects to reach, okay, all manner of outside funding, fund much if it leaves additional thirty-six million to follow on spending, but when, as well as, will it be at least seventy? Plus, as well as against state and federal funding, it's all very taxed all the public. That, be sure to note, that almost forty-two percent is at least fifty-two million dollars for those who just spent a few years to these areas, just to make any steps, just to tend to names that literally, as well as soon as possible, local roads are sorry shape. Given the annual increases in real economic terms in the annual hotel motel tax, since it was enacted seventeen years ago, as well as even more revenue there to come, given the pending new Quincy, for Quincy Hotel, there is ample funding available to use somewhere to speed up the rate of the redoing of local streets to provision, just more easily, rather than continue to fall down, fall behind. As such, the mayor does not care to agree with the will of this body, if it uses a modest proportion of the hotel motel tax to help fund the renovation of local streets, this body should be seriously considered opting to pare back the mayor's twenty-seven million dollar bond authorization, as well as ride herd on any alternative request, otherwise can use revenue, as in all honesty. We know that locals are far more interested in seeing local street put in good repair than to see Quincy turn into a new Hollywood paradise. Thank you. Any consideration.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Amy Santiya, with seventy-one, went to that, and I wasn't going to speak, but here I am. I'm in favor of using some of the hotel motel tax to repair the streets and sidewalks, because that's what makes it a neighborhood, and a lot of us still live in neighborhoods and not in apartments and condos in downtown Quincy, and the streets are deplorable and the sidewalks are deplorable, and that's what makes it a neighborhood, and that's why I want to stay in Quincy. And I applaud Mr. King for proposing this, and I would like to see it happen. I would also like to hear of a master plan for repairing the streets. I've lived here almost forty years, and I've yet to see a master plan in the works, in the making, to repair our streets and sidewalks. So I am in favor of using money from somewhere to repair the streets and sidewalks. Thank you.
In favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Island Greenbar. I live on Thirty-Ninth Fayette Street, which is in North Quincy, and I'm definitely in favor. I live at Clonmanian Complex, which is practically across the street from where our hotel is going to be built shortly. And if you look at that small section of Fayette Street that I live on, there's over seventy-five potholes, and there's also Walliston Station that's about to be closed down for two years, and gets where all the buses are going to go through, right on that in this section of road. So definitely, I'm in favor of making sure that we have enough tax dollars to fix the roads in Quincy. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
John O'Fale, sixty-two Grand Mall Road. Good evening, everybody. I just would like to make one point, that we can use community block grant money to fix the streets also, so you could lobby to the mayor to maybe use more of the community block grant money. The mayor's already said that he's going to veto this, even if it does pass. We need a capital improvement plan that's going to fix the streets. Unfortunately, you can't have low taxes and good services, they don't both work together. So taxes might have to go up to fix the streets, if that's what the constituents want. And I would just like to, on a private note, it's my parents' fifty-second wedding anniversary today, and they're home watching, I would like to say happy anniversary to my mother and father, who have been living in Quincy for fifty-two years, paying property taxes, driving on the streets, and to hit this question right there, Commissioner Ramondi fixed over eleven thousand potholes. I'm not sure how seventy-five potholes on Fayette Street got by, but anyway, have a good evening. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Can't sign back in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close this...
We do have, we have a meeting to attend, to be called, and I'm a bit too busy.
Could you please read it into the record?
Thank you. Dear Counselor, I am unable to attend today's meeting, but both want a box in Quincy. However, I wanted to make my opinion on to you. I am a homeowner in the middle of Walliston Hill, and my, I and my wife totally glad. We enjoy the parks and green space available to us in Quincy. However, because we travel around the area extensively on foot, we have a unique perspective on the sidewalks and the streets in Quincy. To say that we are extremely disappointed with them, I often reply to my wife that I need hiking boots to walk in order to avoid straining my ankle. It has become a running joke that even though we are glad, we could tell how excited the drivers are in the end of Quincy by the potholes and rough surfaces when vehicles come. I know that the parks are important and they are enjoyment of life, however, safe sidewalks and streets are in my opinion better, for without them, we travel to the parks and green areas of vehicles. I urge you to consider carefully whether you direct Quincy's limited funds. Thank you. John E. Smith, Twenty-two Winburg Ave, Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do you have any, no other implications for support?
No.
Thank you. Anyone else, seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close this section of the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of two thousand seventeen oh five five? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I'm Reverend Sheldon Vett, residing in Forty-Three Marymount Road. I administer a United First Parish Church in Quincy, and I also, I also serve as a director of the Friends of Butler's Pond, which many of you know is a community organization working with the city to restore and preserve Butler's Pond. And I speak on behalf of the Friends to oppose the proposed amendment to Quincy's local room occupancy tax. I have sent an email to Council of Forests, or beat out to the Friends, to Council of Forests with copies to the councilors, which you may have had a chance to see. But in sum, we agree with Mayor Koch and hopefully several of the US councilors, that these tax revenues must be preserved for the currently prescribed uses, which include, as you know, tourism, historical preservation of the space parks, and importantly, for the Friends, restoration or maintenance of wetlands, and the restoration or maintenance of ecological areas. As the mayor and others have pointed out, funds for such uses are hard to come by from other sources, and Quincy's needs with all of our natural resources and needs for parks and so forth, in these areas are great. Butler Pond is a case in point, and it's fun to say, Council of Forests, but I wanted to thank her, we greatly appreciate her efforts as our Ward One councillor over the years, supporting our efforts in partnership with the Quincy, our Public Works and Parks Department, to restore and preserve Butler's Pond as a sensitive wetland and natural area, a wildland habitat, and recreational resource. Butler's Pond is an ecological gem, and we fully appreciate that, but it's located only just a few blocks from this very spot, from City Hall, the new Adams Hancock Park, Adams National Historical Park, and is in fact the front yard of Dorothy Quincy House, actually historically, it was the front yard of the Dorothy Quincy House, and for all these reasons, it is an important element also of Quincy's appeal as a tourist destination. The city is currently in the process of obtaining the necessary permits for an important restoration project to remove accumulated sediment from the pond and to construct a gravel wetland, stormwater hatch basin at the Butler and Butler Road and the pond, in order to catch the sediments that entered the pond from the storm drains that serve Butler Road, Marymount Road, its other hard rig intersection, and part Marymount Road past the cemetery. Not only to capture the sediments, also to filter out the natural vegetation, the various pollutants and fertilizers and so forth from runoff from driveways and the roads that cause, invite the basic species to grow in the pond and cause a green scum that you see on the pond to bloom in the summer months. The Quincy Conservation Commission gave us unanimous approval on February first, and we expect final regulatory approval granted to the city by the state Massachusetts, by Massachusetts Department of Barbell Protection, Army Corps of Engineering, and other agencies that have jurisdiction. Sin processing is going well, as far as we understand it. But the next major challenge, this is my point here tonight, will be the secure funding for this project, a cost of which is estimated to be approximately five hundred thousand dollars between the sediment removal and the stormwater hatch basin, the ecological cat environment hatch basin. And as other sources, we are discovering for such funding appear to be quite limited, the Friends, together with the city, which is responsible for the pond, may well need to turn to the hotel motel tax revenue source in order to accomplish this important project. So therefore, for all the reasons, we oppose this amendment that increase the allowed uses to, that would increase, we oppose the amendment which would increase allowed uses to general purposes such as road maintenance, stations, which do have other funding sources. But we thank the council for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Last and final time, you may sign in opposition, as well in the back, there are sheets in the back. Want to note that we are receipt of the email that you mentioned, and we will make that part of the record as well. Seeing no one else wishing to speak in opposition, I'll close this section and I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Madam Clerk, over.